About hopscotch four-square, uh, copy cub, I had to look it up, I'll be honest with you, uh, what that was, but the idea here is to provide something exciting for the kids to return to when they come back in September. Uh, we've had success, uh, in other, uh, schoolyards with these sorts of things, and then also success with this particular PTO, uh, who last summer worked with Raw Arts to erect some artwork, uh, in the front of the building. Just a wonderful idea, uh, all supported by the PTO, funding and so forth. Had a chance to talk with, uh, ISD, they're in complete, uh, support of it, uh, so I would appreciate, uh, the committee's support also.
Anyone want to speak? Mrs. Capola?
Just I want to thank the, uh, Bricket School PTO for taking on the project and, uh, funding it and finding funding for it, and hopefully they use paint better than we city uses on the crosswalks. Good paint, tell them.
Uh, Mr. Castellanos?
Yeah, I just want to echo, uh, Member Capola and everyone, you know, that, you know, the PTO, the, they've done a fabulous job, I think, all year, and that PTO is very strong, and I know it's, um, it's very important that we, uh, make these type of investments and support these type of initiatives, so I, I'd just like to entertain a motion to, um, support the Bricket School Interactive Artwork Proposal.
I'll second it to move it forward to the full committee.
Roll call.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes. Make a motion to adjourn.
Awesome. Second?
Second.
Member?
Roll call.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I want to thank the Bricket School Interactive Artwork Place, too. Didn't get a chance at all.
Open mic, for good measure. The views are matters of concern, and school committee sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation in three minutes in order to accommodate as many people's time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least eighteen years of age or enrolled in high school in Lynn Public Schools District, having discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if he or she feels that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. The speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or member of the school administration attendance. That member through the chair may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence fifteen minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. Is anyone here wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone for open mic? Seeing no one, we close the open mic. And we will begin at six P.M.
All right, I'd like to call to order the seventh special meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
Now, please rise for a salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, uh, we go right down to the first item on the agenda, which is the search for the interim superintendent. Last time we were here, uh, we set this, uh, date to follow up, uh, the conversation about a, uh, replacement superintendent, and the conversation, uh, was around what to do for this, uh, school year, I think. Uh, we felt like there was going to need to be a, uh, extensive search for the permanent replacement, and that, uh, we had a goal of, of stability for, uh, this coming school year, uh, and also wanted to, to do a little bit more exploration as to whether candidates for the interim would be, uh, candidates for the permanent as well. Uh, and, you know, thi- this is obviously, um, a decision the school committee makes, it's an important one, um, and it is, uh, one that needs to be done in regular session, in a public meeting, and, and, you know, I think we all, uh, recognize that that is, uh, an obligation we have to the public and, 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 uh, are, uh, you know, in a position to have that discussion here tonight. Uh, so I thought, um, you know, uh, we, it would be helpful for us, uh, you know, with the goal of, uh, the stability of mine and, uh, the goal of, of being ready for this coming school year, if we could, uh, ask the, the superintendent to, to present a recommendation, um, and, uh, we can, uh, let the committee take it from there. Let's go on.
Yep. So, um, I've prepared a, a statement to reflect, uh, my recommendation, to make sure that I don't mince words here. So, uh, as educational leaders, to whom we extend the privilege of working with our students, uh, our staff, our families through hiring is one of our chief responsibilities. For the school committee, for this committee, that solemn responsibility extends to your hiring of the interim or permanent superintendent. The decision is about, uh, the decision about this appointment rests solely and exclusively with the school committee. The committee is aware of my recommendation for an interim candidate. Nonetheless, uh, I've been asked to share that recommendation in this public forum. I want to first acknowledge that I'm only offering my opinion, and while I'm making such an, an offer at a request, I want to set your expectations from the outset that beyond my opinion, I don't intend to discuss the factors that, for me, go into my conclusions. From my view, doing so would be tantamount to an employee review that is not proper, and this is not the proper space for that discussion. One of the many, many things that I celebrate casually and formally about the Lynn Public Schools is not only the stability in its leadership ranks, but also the extraordinary talent therein. That, this is one quality among others, that sets Lynn apart from peer districts across the state and beyond. It is for this reason that we consistently see not only the development and implementation of research-based and innovative programs across our district, but the unique ability to sustain them over time. I share this with you once again to elevate and celebrate our leadership team, but also to recommend that you need not look beyond the scope of the existing leadership in Lynn for an interim appointment. Not only do you have the appropriate leader here now, you have the opportunity to continue those research-based and innovative programs and many other systems without interruption while leveraging deep institutional knowledge with an inside appointment for the next school year. My tenure as superintendent was during some of the most challenging years in recent history. We weathered the storm for certain, but also advanced in really meaningful and tangible ways in our skillsets and programming, and most importantly, in our mindsets. This was work that was developed, guided, and masterfully implemented in large part by the deputy, by Deputy Superintendent Powers and Deputy Superintendent Regirro. There's no way that we would be where we are today without their ingenuity, their patience, their willingness to give honest feedback to me and others, and countless hours beyond the traditional workday dedicated to moving all of these initiatives forward. I've learned a lot about the superintendency in my tenure here, uh, about the tangible skillset as well as the intangible qualities that are so critical to the success in the role. Insofar as it relates to a recommendation, for me, I need not look, look any farther than the two superb deputy superintendents who have both served with distinction over the past four years. But the district can only have one interim superintendent. The superintendency is an extremely challenging role. Simply maintaining in the role, never mind achieving any degree of success, requires far more than a willingness. It requires a deep desire for and aspiration to it. I know this has and continues to be the case for Deputy Superintendent Regirro. It is for this and all of the aforementioned reasons that I recommend Deb Regirro to be the interim superintendent for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. As I mentioned in the outset, it is the school committee's responsibility to select the superintendent, whether on an interim or permanent basis. I offer these thoughts at your request and wish you wisdom in making your decision.
Member Gailey?
I was wondering if we could have two, because I know, I heard today that Danvers had two superintendents, when they had intrums, have two interim superintendents. If that would be possible.
Dr. Tomwala, did you use?
Um, uh, yeah, I, I, I think there was one on leave and one who was in an acting role. I don't think there were two at one point in time, just as a point of clarification. There was, there were two actively employed, but one was on leave. This is a point of clarification.
Okay, okay. Other, Member Capola?
Um, first of all, I, I think we haven't, um, had enough discussion on, um, when we talk about, um, the choosing a particular person. How is, how is that contract or MOA, MOA, or whatever we're going to write up for the person that would be getting that? Um, we had discussion about not, um, person not being able to apply for the job. So, has something been written up that we can look at?
Did you have, was that it?
That was one question.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, so I'm thinking on one question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was you, do you have others, or?
Um, yeah, I have thoughts. Um, you know, I, um, I, I personally, I appreciate that the superintendent has given us, um, you know, his recommendation and, and has acknowledged that it does, it does belong to us. And, um, it's just that I, um, I'm, I've been, I look at what we went through this year, and I, I felt as though elementary was much more stable than our secondary, and as far as, um, how they were overseen. And, um, I'm just wondering, um, and, and, and as well as Mrs. Powers was, um, as having been a deputy superintendent longer, you know, it was my concern, you know, whether, um, we're passing her over or not. And it's, uh, if it's not something that somebody can apply for, then, um, you know, I, I look to say, I'd like to see her considered by some of us at the table.
Okay, yeah, so on the first question on the contract, I think, um, what we would do, uh, after the selection is that we would, uh, have another meeting where we go into executive session and, and do the contract. Um, we, uh, are going to need to do that anyway for a couple of the other contracts that are coming along, uh, with the other bargaining units. Uh, so that would happen later this summer. Uh, and then, my understanding is that, uh, Deputy Superintendent Regirro would, would not be a candidate for the, the permanent, uh, role, and that, you know, we would be able to address that in the contract if that were the will.
So, in other words, is it already decided that Deb Regirro is our dep, is our superintendent, then, the way you said that?
It will be on the-
She's agreed not to. I mean, I don't know how many people we've asked to, um, look at for, for an interim superintendent, you know? That's all I'm asking you.
Yeah, no, the, the question, the question is, has it been decided? The answer is not yet. That's this committee's decision.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Just if I could add on the contract. Uh, usually, whether it's a permanent appointment or in this case, uh, whatever the committee decides would be contingent upon, uh, successful contract negotiations with whomever you decide to select. So, that would be, my recommendation, that would be part of the motion, that any candidate you select would be contingent upon successful contract negotiations.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Greenspan. Member Castellanos, Member Gailey?
Um, just, uh, I said these questions out to, um, I did speak with the mayor, I know folks over the week. Um, I think one of my, my questions were around the domino effect, when we pull off a deputy and to go into the superintendent role. Um, I know in particular, secondary, we were in turnaround with Classical. Um, there was some concerns around, like, what that would look like if we do move the secondary deputy into superintendent role, um, what this orientation looked like for the person stepping up into that role as prince, as a deputy superintendent, because I know, uh, Deputy Regirro went through a lot of professional development, conflict, she was well-versed in that turnaround process and ve- very well-invested, um, and very, you know, her leadership was very there. Like, it's just to, so to have that loss, I'd call it a loss, because a lot of people look up to Deputy Regirro in that area, especially during turnaround when they're looking for leadership. I'd like to have a conversation possibly with the, the district on how we would plan that out, because it's, it does leave me with some concerns.
Yeah, well, so I think, um, Deputy Superintendent, I mean, these are, these are, uh, issues that we address here and then when we make this deliberation, so if Dr. Tomwala has thoughts, or?
Yeah, I just want to be clear on what the question is. The question is about, um, what would happen if Deputy Superintendent Regirro, if you selected her to be the interim, uh, as it relates to someone filling the role that she's vacating, and then if that is a person within our district, uh, what would happen in that scenario in terms of, uh, filling that position? Uh, and, you know, I, I can just offer a, a high-level response to that, that it is, uh, fairly common in districts when, uh, there's a selection, uh, of an interim, uh, that that domino effect happens. Uh, I mean, that happened, that it's actually happened during my tenure, um, at, at the school level. And what I would say, I mean, I was very intentional about talking about the stability in leadership in Lynn. I mean, we've got some very talented, um, you know, building-level leaders, we've very talent, that, very talented central office administrators, and so I, I, my suggestion would be to take this one step at a time, right? You make a selection, uh, on who is your interim superintendent, and then the next piece of the work involves, you know, selecting a, a replacement for the vacated deputy superintendent position and thinking very carefully about the impact of whoever is selected, uh, for that. Um, I, I don't know that this evening you can forecast down to, I, I, I don't know that you can go the distance on that domino effect, uh, this evening. I would recommend taking it one step at a time. I don't, I don't know if others want to speak up on that. And then, uh, you know, in terms of, I mean, one of the many things that I, I think, um, works well in this district is, uh, transition and mentorship, right? Uh, all the way back to when I came here as a deputy superintendent, there was a, another deputy in place who supported me with my transition. Um, when that person retired, I mean, I'd like to think that Deputy Superintendent Powers felt like I supported her, uh, in her transition, and maybe she showed me a few things, uh, also. Um, but, but that, that piece, I'd say we are, the district is very practiced at, um, and I, I don't see that as being a concern.
Member, uh, Magnolia, and Member Dugan?
What about me?
And then Member Gailey, yeah.
But I was not.
She was, she was before us.
Okay, all right. Member Gailey, Member Magnolia, Member Dugan.
Um, Attorney Greenspan, have you ever heard of any district that had two interim superintendents?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
Okay. Member Magnolia?
Um, I'd like to move to appoint Deb Regirro as interim superintendent effective August twelfth, twenty-twenty-two until July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, or sooner in the event that a permanent superintendent commences employment.
Second.
And I have it written down, if you need me to give it to you later.
And then, uh, I think I, I had Member Dugan, uh-
We can have discussion after the motion.
Yep, for discussion, yep. Made a motion, made a second, and, and then, uh, Member Dugan.
Shall we have the discussion first before we motion and vote?
The motion's on the table, we're not going to vote yet.
Okay.
It's, uh, just a discussion.
So, yeah, I'd just like to speak in behalf of Deputy Superintendent Regirro. Um, you know, we just approved a two-hundred-million-dollar budget that is, you know, trans- transformational, you know, um, and I think we really need somebody that's there, that's been in the, uh, weeds, as to say, uh, that's going to help us out, move forward with that. Also, someone that's going to continue the vision we've started, and then, um, something that I'm also really excited about is the earlyage college program, and I know that Deputy Superintendent Regirro has been really involved in that, so just making sure that gets, you know, going on its feet, um, and, and moving in the right direction. So, you know, I just wanted to speak in behalf of her and, and, um, give my feelings on that, so.
Thank you, Member Dugan. Uh, Member Magnolia?
So, I'd like to speak to my motion and the reason that I made it. Um, as most of you know, I'm employed at North Shore Community College, and we just went through an interim president, a presidential search, a brand-new president. We had a number of sort of shuffles within the organization as a result of that, and the decision to have an interim outside of the organization, while at the time seemed to make sense because the pandemic had already started, actually had the effect of somebody who came in from a four-year institution, who is not as familiar with the way that the two-year institution worked, and there were a number of very steep learning curves in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of a lot of transition. And so, one of the reasons that I made this motion, besides having complete confidence in Deputy Superintendent Regirro's ability to do this job, is that I think that stability coming out of the pandemic is one of the highest values we can give to this interim appointment. When we search for the permanent superintendent, we can be deliberative, we can take our time, because we have absolute confidence that the ship will be stable. I love to call the, um, Lynn Public School system a cruise ship, not a speedboat. And the thing about a cruise ship is, it doesn't turn on a dime, and it has to work like a well-oiled machine, because if people aren't fed on time, that is just as important as the way the engines run. And all of those pieces need expertise, they all need experience, and they all need a very steady hand, and I see that in Deputy Superintendent Regirro.
Thank you. Member Magnolia, uh, would, would anyone, uh, consider a friendly amendment, just to Attorney Greenspan's point about adding, uh, contingent upon successful contract negotiation?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, if someone could make that amendment, or if you want to make it.
Uh, I'd like to friendly amend my own, and I'll add it to the language here-
Okay.
-which is, um, contingent upon successful contract negotiation.
Okay. So, that's the motion that's on the table that has been seconded. Is there any other discussion? We want to leave plenty of time and opportunity for the discussion. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. So, just as, uh, uh, next step here, we will obviously, uh, be in touch to schedule a meeting for executive session, um, to, uh, negotiate the contract. Also, want to let everyone know, I think we talked about, um, the search commencing that's going to happen over the course of this school year. Uh, we have the option to hire a, uh, search firm, search consultant, which the district did in its last search, uh, four years ago. The, the first step there is to, uh, it's, it's between, it's in the threshold of procurement that, uh, it's, makes more sense to get multiple quotes, uh, before we make a decision. So, uh, Danielle and I are in the process of, of securing those quotes, and, and we will, uh, share those with the committee so that we can, um, make a decision about the search selection, uh, and that includes the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, who we worked with last time. Uh, I had Member Gailey and then Member Capola.
You answered my question, so we'll be calling Dylan Kuchar.
Yes, I've been, I've, I've spoken with Mr. Kuchar multiple times, and he's been incredibly helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Member Capola?
Uh, one of the things you said, and maybe I just misunderstood it, you said, "We have other contracts to go into executive session later in the summer." So, should this wait till later in the summer? I mean, we're talking about an August twelfth.
Yeah, I, I, I think, um, I think some of them-
Late till the last minute, and it doesn't materialize?
I think some of them are already done. Um, the, but Attorney Greenspan, yeah?
We have two tentative agreements with two other units that are ready, uh, will be ready, uh, within probably a week.
Okay, so not later in the summer, but more earlier in the summer. Okay.
I don't mean late summer, I mean later in the summer than now, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions?
Mayor, can I just say something?
Yeah.
First of all, I just want to say thank you, um, for having the confidence in me. Kim Powers and I have been sisters in leadership for many, many years, and will continue that sisterhood. I know it's public record that, or public knowledge, that I did pursue a superintendent, um, position in PBD, was a finalist at one point, was very vested in that step, but when I got to work with such an incredible team, I opted to stop that step and continue this partnership. I have always been dedicated to Lynn, thirty-seven years this year. Um, when I was asked the question, "Would I want to apply for the permanent position?", my reason for saying no is because I am very dedicated to Lynn and feel very strongly that the next superintendent needs to be four or more years. I don't know that I have four or more years in me, and needs to represent the students and families of Lynn.
Yes.
Hopefully, in my opinion, linguistically. Um, I don't have that. I have the passion for it, but I don't have that, and I think the city deserves that. So, I just wanted you to hear from me. I have stepped up multiple times in my career when the district needed me. Went to Harrington when it went level four, went to Ford when it needed an extra person and did two schools simultaneously. I did that because I love Lynn and are dedicated to the Lynn Public Schools, and I promise you, I will give you everything I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, really appreciate that, and, 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 Member Gailey, to your point, I did, I, one of the things that Mr. Kuchar, uh, mentioned, you know, he has, he's fond of his sayings, uh, and, uh, he pointed out that there is, there's no, there's no, there's no title of interim superintendent, there's superintendent, uh, that has a, a shorter contract, um, and we are, uh, excited to, uh, take this step. So, we really appreciate you sharing that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Seeing no other, uh, items on the agenda unless anyone else has?
Yes.
Yeah.
The Buildings and Grounds-
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
My subcommittee.
Yeah. Member Gailey, any votes taken in the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee?
Yes, there was a vote taken, um, to, the motion made to approve and bring to the full committee the Bricket School Interactive Artwork Proposal.
All right. Any, uh, motion from the committee to accept the recommendation?
Motion to accept the recommendation.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Now, seeing no business.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you.
Aye. All right.
of interim superintendent, there's superintendent that has a shorter contract. And we are excited to take this step. So we really appreciate you sharing that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
See, no other items on the agenda unless anyone else has?
Yes, the Buildings and Grounds-
Oh, I'm sorry.
My subcommittee.
Member Gailey? Any votes taken in the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee?
Yes, there was a vote taken to, a motion made to approve and bring to the full committee the Bricket School Interactive Artwork Proposal.
All right. Any motion from the committee to accept the recommendation?
Motion to accept the recommendation.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Coppola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Now, speaking of business.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned, thank you.
All right.